Could we bow our heads, please? Father, we come before you to welcome you to this meeting. We give you honor and acknowledge you as our Creator and our Provider. We also honor the Mayor, the Councilmen, the city workers, and our police force here that make our city function correctly, and they protect us through their, through the police force. And as we begin this meeting, we ask that you will guide our thoughts and our actions so we may have a successful meeting tonight. May our meeting be full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. As we gather to make decisions for our community, may we use our best skills and judgment. May we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us. May we always act in accordance with what is best for our community. And thank you, Lord, for the unity tonight and in this community also. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
The time is now.
If we go by that one.
The time is now seven o'clock. I'll call for the regular city council meeting for Perry, April 18th, 2019. Can we all scratch the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Devin, we please roll call.
Karen Davis. Craig Elliott.
Here.
Anna Grass.
Here.
Christopher Powell.
Here.
Michael Queen.
Here.
Terry Wood.
Here.
Mary Jane Shuglett. All the con for except council member Karen Davis and Mary Jane Shuglett.
All right, so approval of the agenda. Is there the agenda?
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Second.
Approval, approval, approval of the agenda moved by Elliott, second by Powell. All any other questions, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next we'll have the reading and approval of the previous minutes for the March 7th. Devin, we please read the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes, or I move that we suspend the rule, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the March 7th, 2019 regular council meeting.
Second. Motion by Powell, second by Grass that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the March 7th, 2019 regular council meeting.
Under the same.
We'll do it separate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved. Devin, we please read the minutes for the March 28th.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the March 28th, 2019 regular meeting.
Moved by Grass, supported by Wood, that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the March 28th meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So I'm gonna ask council if we can, if anybody mind if we adjust the schedule, adjust the agenda a little bit to allow for new business first in case we have someone that needs to lead. Is everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. So we will go to presentation and approval of the bills. Has everybody had a chance to review the bills?
Has everybody gotten both sets of bills?
You can keep going. I just totally have my.
Terry, you can hit them. So you don't have to wait for them.
You need some?
No, I'm good. I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Got motion to the bills, has everybody had a chance to?
Yeah, I move that we suspend, oh, well, the bills here, I move that we approve the bills.
I did it at my house, it didn't work. A lot of phone calls.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized.
Second, moved by Powell, second by Grass, that we approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we're gonna move on now to old business, and what we have is the second quarter budget comparison. Now, Joanne's not here tonight, but.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, oh, excuse me, okay. Joanne?
That's okay.
Sorry, I didn't see you back there.
I'm invisible.
No, you're just quiet.
I need purple hair.
How you feeling?
With my fingers.
I was gonna say that!
I'm feeling good.
Good, good, good.
I've been at work every day since I got out of the hospital, so short of doctors' assistance, I'm doing good. The second quarter budget comparison, I'm gonna ask that you approve it as presented. I have no amendments at this time. Anything that needs to be amended at that will be done in the third quarter. We have the project that was done for highway, major highway local, for the sidewalks, and Devin's elections. We got together and she gave me a figure, an estimated figure of what it's gonna be between now and the end of the year, so I'm gonna go ahead and do those that third quarter. I have March all balanced out, so there's no reason why the third quarter shouldn't be at the next meeting. And I will ask that they put it on the agenda. But there's nothing oddball, everything was in, within, for the second quarter was within 50% where it should be.
I move the third quarter comparison as presented.
I'll second that.
Moved by Grass, seconded by Elliott, that we approve the third quarter budget comparison as presented by the Treasurer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, or none? So carries. Next is Mayor's appointments, and we have none, so we will go on to, thanks, Joanne.
I feel fine, really. Just a little winded sometimes.
So right now we have no appoint, no, no one here for Mayor's appointment, so can we leave this on the table, is no action taken, check my approval? Onto new business. We have the possible approval of the phosphate addition to the water supply. I think we have Mr. Sauer here to discuss this, please.
I'm not, I'm not asking for a motion or anything tonight.
Yep.
It's basically just a discussion. Approximately a year ago, we did some samples in, throughout the distribution system, and then we started doing, and this was just a voluntary thing that, so that we could better monitor our water quality parameters and whatnot, or at least see what, what's happening in the distribution system. And so we did several rounds of coupon testing out at the water treatment plant that, I don't know if you wanna see pictures, but we had lead and copper samples in these coupon boards and was treated with a blend of phosphate. So we had little, and then they measure the amount of corrosion, erosion on the metal strips. So I met with the DEQ, the company Alhern Engineering, and DEQ's corrosion control specialist last week, just to go over the amount of treat, what the treatment did versus the untreated Everybody's heard about the lead and copper issues, or the lead issues in Flint. We are well under, we have no issues. The MCL for lead is 15 parts per billion, we are at two. The MCL for copper is 1,300 parts per billion, we are at 510. So currently, there's not an issue with lead and copper. We do have to reevaluate our sampling pools mandated by the DEQ, I have to have that done by the end of this year. So looking at that, we just wanted to monitor the system, make sure that we're making the best decisions going forward. The untreated metals in the system had fairly high erosion rates. They use terms like one mil per year, okay? So that equivalent to .00254 thousandths of an inch of erosion every year, depending on flow rates and that type of thing, but that's the typical erosion rate. Ours on mild steel were over, on, over two, two mils per year, and another sample was over three. Lead and copper untreated was five and one mil per year, so that's just the stripping away of the material, okay? DEQ, the reason for this is basically what we would do if, if this was implemented, about a gallon of this polyphosphate ortho blend would be added to 150,000 gallons of water. It would start to coat and put a thin metallic coating on the inside of our water mains. Copper pipes galvanized, if there are any lead that we don't know about, household fixtures, just a thin, that's, that's the basis for if we would move to this.
And if it was straight, it would keep them from eroding, or slow the erosion down?
Yes, it would, it'll slow it. It's called corrosion control, and bigger cities are, are having to do this, populations over 5,000, or, excuse me, 10,000. We're not, we're not at that number numerically. I just felt necessary to look into it, you know, right now all we've done is sampling and whatnot and run test samples. Nothing has been added to our distribution water. It is safe, we do all of our mandated testing, that's, this would increase my workload implementing this quite significantly, but, you know, it's, the basis is to find if we have any lead service lines, which I've never seen one here in the city of Perry. We've had a few goos next, but the vast majority have been removed over, over time. So it's just a, a treatment to help eliminate, keep those numbers down.
John, if we were to implement this, what would be, do you have any idea what the annual cost would be?
Initially, the initial startup cost is probably gonna be around $10,000 to $12,000 to buy all the equipment, the pumps, that type of stuff, the monitoring equipment. Moving forward after that, I, I've calculated, you know, I mean, obviously I didn't calculate inflation, I would say four to 6,000 for the chemical.
Is that an increase that would just take the budget, or is it pass that along on the water bills, or?
Well, it would, you know, rate increases slowly ate that, but, you know, it is an extra expense. Looking at it, you know, they look, they look at it this way scientifically, that it starts to slow main breaks and that type of thing. We've had some odd occurrences, most recent over here on Third Street, different, different things like that. I'm not, you know, saying that it's 100% that it's gonna solve every problem, because nothing solves every problem, but as you have an aging infrastructure, this is a small piece of the puzzle to get you through to replacement.
This is a quick clarification, make sure I admit everybody else here has it. What you're stating is, what this would do is, because our water is pretty corrosive overall, it goes and lines the pipes and allows the water not to touch the pipes there as much, at least, and therefore keeping them longer and probably not be stripped away as fast.
Yes.
Okay. Is something you think we need to do right away, or?
We have time. I, I just wanted to present it and get, get everything started so that it's in your minds. If you have questions that I can't answer immediately, get with me over, you know, we don't, we don't, we're, this is a voluntary thing that we've, I took on to start investigating and looking at.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you know the question for anybody, many of us up here.
Sure.
Is it something that would be beneficial to just start right as quick as possible?
We, we do have an aging infrastructure. A lot of stuff has been changed, but we do have a lot of old cast iron pipes.
Sure.
What are we looking at on that, on the future? How long, approximately, I don't know, look at you on the spot, or say, hard and fast?
As far as dollar figures?
In time to?
Well, we're looking at some of our stuff as original, so 50, 60 years old.
Ask me how much time would you say we have left on that?
Well, things keep, you know, in places, not as much as others. The risk of catastrophic failure where a lot shut, has to be shut down to repair if a, a major blowout or something was to happen, you know, as time goes on, increases. I'm not saying that this will solve.
That issue situation.
My hopes were that it would solve some of the possible water discoloration out in parts of the system, along with flushing. I think we're doing good with our flushing program, we've changed it some, and I believe we have less complaints. You know, I do have, I do know the dollar figures for what we need to replace, you know.
Shoot, you, you, I'm naive, and I'm sure that you're naive when you.
You know, I've got, I've got figures of roughly nine million.
And how long do you think we'd have until that would be dealt with?
That's in the 20-year plan, if, you know, so that stuff's gonna put it out there at eight years old before, it's, it's all in the asset management plan, capital improvements, the reliability study, I have all those documents.
And this will extend the life of those pipes? Potentially.
Potentially.
Nothing guaranteed, though.
Right. I, I, from everything that I have gathered and read and understand, it will help. So I'm not asking, you know, to approve it, anything tonight. I have to do some more research and work with the DEQ. And then would.
Is this something that's overall, as far as infrastructure, that's something that we need to be looking into, start looking into for the future, or?
I, I have reached out to Rural Community Assistance Program, and they're gonna help, I gotta compile a ton of information for them to do a free analysis on our water rates to see where we gotta go moving forward. You know, I, I wish I could make everything happen fast, but it does not happen fast. So I'm just informing you guys.
Appreciate it.
But, you know, don't get me wrong, everything, we're, we're running a good system, I just like to think ahead and look towards the future, too. Exactly.
So since no motion, or asking for no approval, we just wanna table this, table it definitely until you come back with?
Yes, I'll, if that's all right, I'll put it on another agenda.
Sounds good. Get a motion to.
I move the motion that we table this item indefinitely until John's able to bring back to us.
I'll second that.
Motion by Grass, seconded by Elliott, to table the discussion of the phosphate addition of the water supply. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Don't go anywhere yet.
So I think I'm on for the next one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, so now we have the possible approval of the freeze kit to help repair broken water lines.
Yes, so I just wanted to give an example, I'll be on the examples tonight, I guess. So this is how we normally, if we have to replace something, without digging up all the way back to the main, which would be across the road, if it's copper, we'll pinch it off to stop the water, replace the curb stop valve, and then this is what we, we do, bringing it open. So here's the regular size of the pipe, and then it's somewhat reformed, but it never comes back fully, so it's a diminished floor.
Floor, okay.
So this isn't a necessity, but it's something that we've been looking into for a while for this freeze kit. You wrap it around the pipe, and it uses carbon dioxide and freezes about a foot section. You cut your line, the water doesn't flow out, you put your valve back on, buzz out, way it goes. And it will do from three eighths inch all the way up to three inch, three inch water lines.
Fantastic. How long, I mean, how long does it help you tigger the pipe, right, and not diminish the?
Yeah, freezing it, because it's just for a few, like 30 minutes or so, you know, so freezing it doesn't affect it.
Right.
It doesn't swell it up and make it burst, 'cause it has room to expand. This here, when you, when you neck it down like this, like I was talking about, the flow of the water going through, eventually we're probably gonna have issues where the crimp marks are. I haven't seen it yet, I probably haven't been here long enough, and hopefully we didn't do too many, I lived through them.
How many of these, like, so this kit here, how many times are you able to use the, in the kit, or?
It comes with two big CO2 tanks, and I wanna say you can do a half a dozen one-inch lines with a tank, in one tank. And then you have the second tank as a backup.
How often do you guys have to do these crimpings, or?
Well, it goes in streets, if I tell ya.
Same year?
Um.
Like 10 a year?
No, not that many.
Okay, that's.
Maybe, maybe a half a dozen, some years.
Okay, that's odd.
So it allows for a better repair, does it, is it any quicker than the old process?
Would've helped you in front of the park on that situation?
No, that was too big.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Does it help put this?
Speeding it up? Probably not, it's gonna be about the same. So it's more of a DPW would like to use, utilize this. I do have money in.
Grass has an aspect, we have money in the budget.
It wasn't a special budgeted item, it was just something that I've added in system maintenance.
Would you like us to do a motion on that tonight?
I would if.
I move that we approve the quote from Municipal Supply, Devin, we purchase a QF 2200 freeze kit for an amount not to exceed $852.
I'll second that. Moved by Grass, seconded by Elliott, that we approve the quote from the municipality supply company to purchase a QF 2200 freeze kit for an amount not to exceed $852. Any questions, any discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I'm figuring.
I'll pose first.
Aye.
Okay, next we have the possible acceptance, or speaking of possible adoption, a resolution to sell the city property. I know you guys have seen some correspondence for this in your email. You've had the property up for quite some time now, not a lot of motion and movement. You've got a pretty good offer here. I think this past week that the real estate agents been doing a lot of work behind the scenes on, so I don't know if there's any discussion, any questions on this.
I noticed it said that out of this would come fees and things like that, and the closing costs, etc.
Right, well, the.
The buyers gonna pay.
The buyers gonna pay, the, the real estate fees and the closing cost.
Okay.
What we would be, on the hook for would just be the, let's see here, the title, the title insurance, title insurance tax, about 520 bucks, and then closing fees are 400 bucks, so, so with what they're, they're offering for the property and then all the other fees, it's a good deal, and we can take that money and put it to much better use.
We had it on a ball.
What was that?
It's on a ball.
Yep.
Because it is property of the city, would that, wouldn't that fall under parts and property?
Let's try.
I, I think it, I think it should, I think it should go back to parts and property, 'cause we are selling property.
Which is, which land is this, like?
This is right over by.
Is it ones over on?
Right in front of the other.
The two, right in front of.
Do they have any questions, motions?
I'll at least put it in place, we can open it up for discussion. I move that we adopt a present, present a resolution which states that we agree to accept an offer of $50,000 in regards to the sale of the city-owned Britton Pines property and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute all necessary legal documents.
Moved by Grass, seconded by Wood, that we adopt, present a resolution which states that we agree to accept an offer of $50,000 in regards to selling city-owned Britton Pines property and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute necessary sale. All in favor?
Sold!
Or, sorry, any?
Any.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. It's been a long time coming to that one. All right, that moves us to possible acceptance of resignation. I have a letter. Do you wanna read this, shall I read this, from Flora Parker?
Go ahead.
So I'll read this. Please accept my resignation from the Compensation Commission. Thank you for having me, Flora Parker, 37, 2019. First and right to my heart, thank you for your service in the commission.
Absolutely.
I move that we accept the resignation of Flora Parker from Local Officers Compensation Committee with regret. Any discussion?
I have a question. How, how soon does this have to be filled? Is there any idea, replacement? Is there any replacements in mind, or?
As of now, far as I know, there is nobody who has stepped up to inquire about that, so if you know anybody who wants to be acquainted to Local Officers Compensation Committee? We have all positions that are open right now on the website.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will move on to discussion of the map for the 2019 Rostaloo Perry Pride Award. Everybody's got a copy of the past map for last year, then a blank one, so one note that needs to be said is whoever gets made needs to get on the ball real quick and get it done, and it's, uh, as we can start off, who wants to pick May? We'll start there.
So it needs to be done right away, and then basically?
Yeah, maybe one will be, she said, within the next week or this week?
As of now, far as I know, there is nobody who has stepped up to inquire about that, so if you know anybody who wants to be acquainted to local officers' compensation committee? We have all positions that are open right now on the website.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Same one, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will move on to discussion of the map for the two thousand and nineteen Rasta Lou Perry Pride Award. Everybody's got a copy of the past map for last year, then a blank one, so one note that needs to be said is whoever gets May needs to get on the ball real quick and get it done. It's, uh, as we can start off, who wants to pick May? We'll start there.
So it needs to be done right away, and then basically?
Yeah, maybe one will be, she said, within the next week or this week?
We try to get contact to people, and you have, you have to go and you have to collect people, and then some people actually decline, they don't accept your pick. So there is a little time process that Dory does after your picks to follow up, and getting the plaque ready and all that kind of stuff, and we try to get it. She tries to have things done at least by the first meeting in May, no later than the second, to have the people attend and be recognized.
Does it, is this year, you seem like, so, was it just this area that got picked for this, and this area for this?
Yeah, the color coding is, is the section, yeah. And then, um, I think we did get a couple of council last year that actually lived in the area, but we tried to avoid that. So it doesn't look like you're part of an area, but we don't have any rules that says that you can't do that.
I think for the first time ever, Mr. Sheppi is eligible. So, anybody have a, a section in a month they would like to choose? We'll go seniority first, Terry, you wanna pick?
Oh, well, why not, yes. Oh, I'm gonna stay away from the ones I've done, because I'd like to see different areas, okay, so I've done this one. Could have there, so we're not going there. I think I've done that one, so why don't I do this, uh, right in the center, just west of Main Street?
The peach colored?
The peach colored?
Peach colored?
Yeah. I'll do that, and right now, I don't want to do May, I don't know what's good in my book, so.
I'll, I'll pick May.
You'll pick May?
Sure.
What color do you want?
So just slip me in.
Terry, I've done here and here, so.
Terry, you wanna do July?
July, that's fine.
Is this a purple color? I will take.
Are you looking bottom, middle?
You do May, go first.
Um, April has to be done still, or May, May first? I'll take May.
You have to have an answer by tomorrow.
Oh, no, it's, I'll take May. There's my answer.
Mr. Grass?
Uh, I will take, uh, the, uh, light colored purple up there.
You wanna do it?
Keep it October as it was last time.
Okay. Do a little bit of, keep, and I apologize for skipping over Ms. Davis, should we keep her in the same section?
If you're gonna put Davis in, in a section, and, and what, what we've done to Terry Wood, a couple of times, so. He happened to not be here when we did this, so he got the, the last box, and then whatever month wasn't picked. But I do recommend, um, with the health situation of Ms. Davis right now, that.
Further down.
Please, please consider that, yeah.
Uh, she had, I'll take, I'll move mine to September if she needs October.
Okay.
Just in case, yeah, that would.
Yeah, I'll do September.
I'll do June, I guess.
June? Which one?
Which, which section are we gonna put Karen in?
Oh, well, she lives over here.
So I'll do that one.
Down here?
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Yep.
So I will take this section once left August. Here in August.
And she can have with Davis, purple?
Yep.
Uh, purple, I'll be in the blue. Because she lives in the blue.
Yeah, he's, he's. She went through October, Davis. So just to make sure everybody has the same thing on their map, going left to right, on the top, I have Queen for August, Terry Wood for July, and Grass for September, and on the bottom left, Davis, October, Christopher, May, and Elliot, June. And Terrence, Dory, thank you.
Perry Pride, and put your best face forward, so.
She's, it's for soup, though.
The rules were given to you a couple meetings back, if you want, um, rules again, please skip with Dory, and she can put that to you, and communicate with her.
With the best face forward, do we have, do we just look at businesses in the foreground, and then we're looking for it?
Yeah, you have to pick all business, and you'll pick all those that are in your area.
In the area.
So your resident.
I'm saying way over here.
Yeah, so your resident will be here, and then the business, all of the businesses, district, you have one business.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, we'll have the possible first reading of the amended zoning ordinance number three forty-four, definitions of adult businesses.
I move that zoning ordinance amendment number three forty-four regarding definitions of adult businesses, which reads as follows, by being placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. The City of Perry zoning ordinance, section two point zero two, definitions, A, A? Is amended as follows. The below cited paragraph shall be inserted immediately after the heading, adult uses or adult oriented businesses. Any use of land, whether vacant or combined with structures or vehicles thereon by which said property is devoted in any manner to, encourages, or permits the use of or consumption of marijuana on the premises other than a private residence. The terms shall include marijuana or cannabis social clubs, marijuana or cannabis rec center, marijuana or cannabis social lounge, cannabis club, social cannabis club, et cetera. All other provisions of said ordinance not inconsistent with the above amendment remain in full force and effect. This ordinance shall take effect thirty days from date of publication.
Second. Moved by Elliott, seconded by Grass, uh, for the possible first reading to the amended zoning ordinance number three forty-four as previously written. Any discussion? Seen done, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, do a roll call? Mr. Grass?
And do a roll call.
Roll call. Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
No.
Eric?
Yes.
Mr. Queen?
Mr. Queen?
Yes.
While the eyes have it, don't they?
All right, we have four yeses, one may, motion carries. Okay, next we will move to the possible amended FOIA policy. Dr. Grass, too. If there's any questions?
Yeah, I gave you a copy from the city attorney on our city's current policy for FOIA, and I also reported a couple of months ago about the laws that have taken in place, um, that they have changed. All we're doing is simply making sure our policy matches the new laws, which is, I think, four pages is the policy, and we're only implementing like two sentences. And it's on page four, um, under section four, fee and deposits. We are just acknowledging, um, the deposit must be received by the city within forty days of the date of notice, and I will note that the law said forty-five, and if you read the law, the state has already determined that we're, um, putting the three days adding on for the mailing. They've just added the three days on, so that the FOIA coordinator can set a date of when it would expire if they do not pay their deposit on the requested FOIA. So the policy in front of you is already in place, this is just an amendment to what we currently have.
I move that we adopt the amended FOIA policy as recommended by the city attorney.
Second. Moved by Powell, seconded by Grass, that we adopt the amended FOIA policy as recommended from the city attorney. Any discussion? Seen done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that is new business, so we will back up to, uh, pre-approved reports and presentations. Jamie, Jamie here from the library board?
Hi, there.
How are ya?
How are you doing?
Good.
I know, I made it color.
That's nice. There was a guy that came here, that did library stuff, and, no, we didn't get anything like this.
Well, I try to keep it. Um, so I see a couple of new faces here. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jamie Cromley, I'm the director of Community District Library. As you might be aware, um, there are seven branches within Community District Library, and one of those branches is located in Perry. So I come here a couple times a year to do, uh, one, once a year to do this, uh, report that is required by departments, or I suppose just departments within the city of Perry, and I usually come here at the end of the summer and do the library report, because the library fiscal year runs from July to June. So a lot of these numbers, the board has already seen, and I won't bore you with statistics and things, but, um, all the reports, we always add a quick history of the library, um, and it, of course, it began in nineteen thirty-five, and it was staffed with volunteers, and then it had, uh, many different librarians over the years. In two thousand and seven, it became part of a district library, which it, it's currently within Community District Library. And right now, we are, our main funding source is a millage, um, so nothing has changed since two thousand and seven. Goals and objectives, this year, we really need to update the library website, it hasn't been updated since two thousand and thirteen, and it looks like it. So that's one major goal we'll be working on this year. Another, uh, goal is to update the staff circulation software that we have, um, we're going to a cloud-based circulation system, and that's, that happens through a cooperative, so that's really like a, a big picture thing that we don't have a lot of control over, but, um, it will be an improvement. And also, with the purchase of this cloud-based system, we hope to provide a library app so that you can request materials and things, kind of like an Amazon app, where you get on and it's, you know, really quick and really fast to purchase something. I'm hoping that, um, we get a lot more people to use the, the online catalog that way and request material and make it easier for them. Um, another thing we'd like to do is to expand digitization of local history collections. We purchased this year a server that is housed at the Coruna branch, where you can access, right now, um, local digital yearbooks, one of them being in, being from Perry, uh, they go back to nineteen, I think nineteen oh seven. So we have Perry yearbooks downloaded, high school yearbooks, Coruna and Myright currently. So that's actually just kind of fun to go back and, and look at those yearbooks. Another thing I'd like to do is see an increase in all branches, not just Perry, but all branches to partner with local businesses, community organizations, and, I see a typo, A A N D, and schools. Right now, I know Carol, who works at the Perry branch, is working hard to get kids to do class visits at the library, to hopefully increase summer reading participation, um, so we're starting off on a good foot. We actually had two class visits today. Another thing is to create more early literacy based programs, because this year, there is this, uh, state mandated, read by a certain level in third grade or you're retained, um, so we really need to, as a library, work to create more programs that will support schools in, in that area, to help improve reading, reading test scores and such for that. And as far as Perry, the Perry branch, um, hopefully, we'd like to improve and upgrade the interior of the space. We've been talking about upgrading the children's area, um, purchasing flexible shelving and things that might be able to move out of the way for programming and that type of thing. And I know that Carol has done quite, she's very successful on her book sales, she, she makes a lot of money via donations with her book sales. So that's, that's a couple things we'd like to see. Okay, moving on, you can see services, everything that we offer at the library, we offer quite a bit. Of course, we offer books, DVDs, eBooks, uh, e-magazines, audiobooks. We have two different vendors that we, um, use for eBooks and e-audiobooks. Our hoopla does, our hoopla app, um, you can download comics, graphic novels, television shows, all of that. New this year, we just implemented a wireless printing system, so that people can come in with their phone and, and print wirelessly. That's been a tremendous help at our Coruna branch, uh, because we're behind the courthouse, and we have a lot of people coming in and needing printing quickly, actually. And also, you know, a lot of people nowadays don't have, they're, they're not maintaining their printers at home, so you can, um, actually get onto the website and kind of order a print, and then come to the library and pick it up. So that's kind of.
That's great.
It, it really is, I, I haven't bought ink for my printer in years, and that's actually really helpful. I don't think people know about that, though.
Are there fees for that, is it?
It's fifteen cents for black and white, and twenty-five cents for colored, so.
Much cheaper than?
It, it is, thirty-five dollars for the cartridge, yeah. Absolutely. We offer lots of programs, our, of course, our district-wide popular summer reading program. This year, we started lending hotspots, um, and of course, the maker kits, which are the STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, math kits. We started lending those last year, we had those, purchased those based on a grant. Of course, the yearbooks and the databases.
On the STEAM things, anybody purchase, or check those out?
Yes, we have, they're mostly geared toward toddlers through young, thirteen's. So, yeah, um, it's things like robotic, you know, little robot machines, circuitry, coding, and then it's, it's simple as blocks, you know, for the younger ones. And then I think, as far as I know, we're the only organization in the county that offers exam proctoring, which is very helpful to students who take classes online. We're the only place that they can go and, and get an exam proctor, and we don't charge for it. Moving on to staff, Carol Pavlica is, is the branch manager, she's been the branch manager for several years now. And Daniel Iler, she is the library assistant, she started there about a year ago. And our city of Perry library board representatives, we had Tom Chappie, um, retired at the end of two thousand and eighteen, and we're very thankful to have Mike Tobias, who's replaced him, he's been quite an active board member. And I, I'm, I'm thankful that you found somebody so quickly, so I really appreciate it. Moving on to statistics, these are no different than what you saw over the summer, because we keep statistics during our fiscal year, which ended July, at the end of June. The statistics you see are for Perry branch only, the top part, so circulation, we, uh, the Perry branch circulated over thirteen thousand items. Over eleven thousand people walked through the door, over four thousand people locked. Uh, over eleven thousand people walked through the door, over four thousand people logged into the computers. Carol hosted nearly eighty programs with about eleven hundred, almost twelve hundred people attending. District-wide, these are just district-wide statistics, because they're digital material, you don't pull out, you know, this person is from, this patron is a Perry patron. So we just keep overall statistics for that. Cardholders, district-wide, we have over six thousand cardholders out of twenty-five thousand people we serve, which is about twenty-five percent. That's a very good type, uh, cardholder rate. The collection, that just tells you how many of those items that we have district-wide in the collection. And then lastly, we have, you can see pictures of, this is the interior of the library. I don't know if any of you have been into the library, but you can see some of the programs that we've housed. And this is just a sampling of the programs that we've had in the past year. Lots of storytimes and crafts and, um, things for a lot of teen programs. Danielle's really trying to ramp up the teen programming.
Okay, alright, I'll follow down there.
So, um, lots of, lots of fun going on in the Perry branch, the Community District Library. So... Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me, I appreciate your support.
We're not taking questions quite yet. Well...
Jamie, if they wanted to find you on the internet to get information about the CDL and the branches, and how to find your Facebook page and any other platforms, how would they do that?
They would, um, they are part of Community District Library, and so they would go to www.mycdl.org. Stands for mycommunitydistrictlibrary.org. And then we do have a Facebook page.
Can we just message you from there?
Yep, you can message, you can, and I'm usually the one that checks the messages, so I'm, I'm pretty good by getting that quickly.
That's right on the front page.
Or call me, or call me at the admin office, although I don't have my phone number on there, but Carol at the Perry branch, her office, her number's on there, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seems, I don't see too many problems. We will move on to, and I thought it was so late in the meeting, since things got jumbled around, but first, public comment. This time, we'd like to welcome anybody from the city to come and comment. Remember, we have a three-minute time.
I'm Caroline Wilson, the county clerk.
Welcome.
Am I limited to three minutes?
Yeah, luck for none.
I've got my hair's up because it was rain day and, you know, that's how things went.
Tom, thank you.
Tom, could I? Here, we will put you under brief approval, so that way you can...
Five minutes.
Okay, five minutes. Well, I'm bringing out the county directories. I'm gonna just put them up here for anyone that may want them. The library is a new addition, so you're listed in here now. And, and now that you've mentioned about the printers being...
Wireless.
Wireless, I will be passing that on to the courthouse, you can bet on that. That's a nice feature. So, um, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak for a few minutes. I'm kind of editing things, getting the directories out for everybody, giving a little update on the clerk's office. We did host a all-service Saturday on March ninth that I thought was successful. The courthouse, the thirty-fifth court, the big courthouse in Coruna, that was the only building that was open from nine AM to two PM. The vital records office had ten constituents walk in and have services. My other side, which is the court side, only had one man file for divorce. He was thrilled that he didn't have to take the day off of work. But Judge Stewart, he held court for civil matters, and so there were three sets of people that came to that. They were thrilled that they didn't have to take time off of work. The other departments, the treasurer's office had a couple people, the register of deeds and equalization did not necessarily. But I was thrilled and felt it was successful, because we were able to help some people that didn't have time to do it during the week, Monday through Friday, eight to five. It also has opened up some conversations as to whether we should really look at something during the week, like, like the secretary of state, and keep open, stay open one, one day. I'm for it. I, I, the clerk's office, especially the vital records, is one side that they, they always have people returning away at noon time, which we stick around if we know someone's coming. We always ask, I've asked my staff to make it, a habit of asking, are you coming from out of town? So that we can try to accommodate them in other means. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, the county is getting ready to go to a uniformed credit card payment system, other than the front of the court. It's called point and pay. One of the features about that is that the constituent is going to pick up a slight fee instead of the county anymore. So that is something that's transitioning right now through our BSNA accounts payable and payroll system that they're implementing these last couple weeks. So if you have any bills that have come to us and we don't get it paid yet, it's, we're go, working through the, the system right now. The other thing I wanted to point out for people was that the CPL renewal process is now being offered online through the Michigan State Police website. So that's a new feature that's nice and convenient for individuals. And lastly, I wanted to talk about the Real ID Act. For those of the, of you that are not familiar with it, it's something that was implemented by the feds in October of 2017. It involves your driver's license and having the gold star. Everyone that has a driver's license is going to have to have that gold star by October of 2020. And what's involved in that with my office is that you need your birth record. So if you're born in our county, we can provide that record, but it has to be certified. If you're a female and you have a name change in any fashion from a divorce to being married, if your name is not the same that's on the birth record, you have to have everything certified to prove otherwise. And so I'm just out kind of sharing that piece of information, because we're seeing an uptick in our numbers as far as people having to come in from the secretary of state. They're mad. I feel bad for the secretary of state, but by 2020 October, you have to have that gold star, or some kind of gold star, or the flag on your license. So it involves coming to clerk's office. So that's pretty much it. I want to thank you for allowing me to have one in three minutes. Okay, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Stay dry.
Yes.
We'll open public comment. Does anyone from the public like to address the council? Okay, so then we'll move on to communications. Devin, do you have any?
Any communication that I wanted to make sure that council has received? It's through MDOT. It's a public outreach program. Public outreach program description, public involvement in the transportation planning process is more than just an agency requirement for the Michigan Department of Transportation. It begins during the state long-range transportation planning process and continues through development, programming, and construction. Throughout development of this new state long-range transportation plan, Michigan Mobility 2045, MDOT is seeking the opinions of a large and diverse group of Michigan residents and stakeholders representing groups with an interest or concern for the state's transportation decision-making process. Why? Because public involvement is integral to the success of the MDOT mission, providing the highest quality, integrated transportation services for economic benefit and improved quality of life. To this end, accomplishing meaningful involvement means making sure that the public has a role in every aspect of decision-making. This requires our willingness to interact and remain sensitive to the public's preferred needs for communicating and valuing public participation in transportation decisions. Valuing public insight also involves meeting the needs of varied public interests from different cultures. This involves reaching underserved populations, including Americans with Disability Act populations, limited English proficiency groups, minorities, Native Americans, the elderly, and low-income populations. These groups can offer a more complete point of view about how to improve the transportation system, expertise from their own life experiences, and a wider range of cultural aspects. Explore the Michigan Mobility 2045 Park and Stakeholder Participation Plan for details on how MDOT plans to extend outreach to a large and more diverse group of Michigan residents. And they don't offer an actual website to go to, but, um, Brad Charlo, that used to live in the city and participated as a council, the planning commission, is the one that brought this to the mayor's attention and wanted to make sure we got it out to our area.
Were they taking surveys somewhere? I don't remember where was that, but if there was somewhere that they had a survey that you could do.
Nice. And that's all the communications that I have.
Okay. Thank you. Move on to mayor's reports. Mayor's report, mayor's report today is a discussion or explanation of the siren repairs that were authorized on 4-1, as we knew when we had the tornado here not too far away. Last month, the, the siren failed to go off. So we had the service company come out, we found, um, the things, they had very poor signal with an antenna at site one. And I have to replace that antenna once it were, antenna was replaced, it had another test and got a very clear signal, and all seems to be functioning in site one. Site two, we found out that, uh, there had been a, the power had been shut off, and the batteries had died. So we have replaced the, the batteries. And under the safety act, the, the mayor was allowed to approve those funds. Site one, one thousand forty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. Site two was eight twenty, eight twenty, so, but everything is up and functioning now, so, um, it should be good. That's good for the other issue.
Did they do anything to keep someone from shutting off the switch?
That was my question.
Because I know that was the...
We isolated the switch, I believe, after we had, after the chief had the discussion last time that it, that issues, so it's pretty much been addressed.
Okay.
That's all I have for mayor's reports, which will, on any other business that may come before the council. It's a second opportunity for the public to address the council. Anybody that would like to address the council? Okay. So, we're on to council discussions and observations. Mr. Wood? Mr. Powell?
I was told that Saturday morning, up here at the, at the gym, functional fitness, whatever it is, Chief, firmly, um, he and several other people are meeting up there with trash bags, and they're gonna hit some of our side roads and some of our dirt roads that are in the city. And in the surrounding area, now that the, the snow's melted away, there's a, a lot of debris up and down the roads. And so he's looking for volunteers, anybody that wanted to come out. It was in, on his Facebook page the other day. And another thing was, I had a question about the, the business compared to residential. Now, down fifty-two south in, in the city limits, Sutton Green, the landscape company, that's next to Ridenhoe. He wanted to, he wants to purchase a, like a concrete grinder, and from the highway work, uh, when they start tearing it out, he and some other people wanted to load it, contract with whoever's, uh, doing the highway, drive it to his, his business property and grind the concrete up, and, and I believe blacktop. And he was told that that's a residential area, he's not going to be allowed to do that. Now, and it was just something I heard today. So I don't know exactly what all's involved, uh, but it was just, if I get asked that question again, I'd like to maybe have a little bit of a better answer for it.
Your best bet on that would be to, um, find out his property, where it's exactly located, and look at your zoning ordinance. And then you would want to file, or look at the zoning map. Look at your zoning map, and then follow through with your zoning ordinance of what defines what it is zoned at. That's my best advice.
Because it's Ridenhoe's garage, his landscape, and then the car class. And so to me, that, I, I thought that would all be, you know, they've got special, um, special permit to have a business in a residential, so I will, I'll check on that. And so, but functional fitness, again, I'm looking for volunteers to help clean up after the snow's gone, and, and, um, it's a possibility that we are going to lose pig sheer pet grooming in the next few months. So may have another open business downtown, open building. And that is it. I had a, a new addition to my family. I had a grandson born on April Fool's, April first, and he spent seventeen days in the ICU, and he is honed out as of yesterday, so... Pop is looking good, and Pop is feeling good. And other than that, um, happy Easter to everybody coming up.
Thank you. Australia?
I have one thing, through looking through the last planning commission meeting and looking through some stuff on the, uh, master plan, I noticed, as I know on the Parks and Rec Committee also, that, uh, back when this was done in 2016, there was fifteen thousand dollars set aside for the Parks and Rec to use, um, towards developing something in the city. And, uh, the initial idea was to spend five hundred dollars to start a disc golf course, and to see what the community involvement would be on that, whether it go, take up to fifteen, do like more of a professional one. So that was kind of the idea back then. I was wondering, is that money still there, available in the...
I have no idea, but...
The way that budget would go, Chris, is that you would have to actually budget that every year and add to it to have that accumulation. So if you look at your current budget, the only monies is that coffers that was put aside, Joanne, from, that was...
That one in the skate park?
That was given.
The skate park. If it's what I'm thinking of when they, um...
They donated...
Donated the money from the skate park to go to just...
Do you recall where...
Unlocked it so that it could go to other, other equipment, and yeah, the money's still...
Do you recall how much that is at this time?
The amount that was transferred over was like six thousand eight hundred dollars.
That's what I, that's what I would have guessed.
Yeah.
That was given, the permission, not be used strictly for skate parks, but to be used in parks. It would have to be used in parks, because that's what it was collected for.
And then prior to me, um, I can't remember her lady, her name, but she gave a check from, uh, Jim Potter, was her name, and she had a check six, eight months ago, I think it was, that she gave to the park, that was from donations.
It was like a thousand.
Was it? Okay. So...
But from what I researched on them, I believe that went into, um, general parks. It didn't go into what Joanne is speaking of, which again, that would go in your regular budget, I'm not sure. Joanne, you can correct me on that.
I think you're right.
Would that be like upkeep on the, the restroom facilities, or, you know, painting equipment, that, that kind of stuff?
This is where you're gonna have a good old time when we get down to those budget figures, because there's all, I mean, yeah, there's, there's maintenance, you know, we have to have so much in for maintenance and for projects and all that kind of stuff, and you as a council help make that decision if the funds are available to put money coffers in that direct area. Your best bet, again, would be get to Joanne afterwards, and she could actually go over those line items and, and show you the history of what it's used for and...
Was that a recommendation?
No, it says it was set, it was officially set aside from the master plan. It was supposed to be for specifically... It was supposed to be for specifically in making...
Who set it aside is my question? The planning commission?
Whoever did... No, it was part of the master plan that was implemented.
The only one that can do that is the council. The only one that can does make money is how it's spent is the council. So they would have to have made a recommendation to the council and then have the council approve it. It, just because they decide to say it doesn't mean it gets done.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I would say they make a recommendation for that, but...
I assumed it was something done by the council, it was in the approved master plan from, from back in 2016 when it was created. That's all I, I was wondering if we still had that or how we could figure that out just to kind of get an idea.
I would say check the council minutes shortly after that master plan was approved to see if they made a recommendation to that at that, if there was any activity done.
Anything else, Mr. Elliott?
I have a, happy Easter, Lord has over.
And Saturday is the, he do that.
No, I think Mike's gonna do it.
I will, Mr. Elliott, this is Devin, have these printed off for us. So click a look at the website, the Facebook page, at 11:00 AM to 12:30 PM, Saturday, April 20th. Perry City Hall, it would be a Easter egg, extravagant, a free games, prizes in the pavilion. Come see the Easter bunny, don't forget the camera. So bring your kids. There'll be hot dog concessions and beverages sponsored by the Perry Area Lions Club. So please, everyone, come attend. It's always a good time to see the little kids outrun like nuts after, you know, somehow they pick up five thousand eggs in about twenty seconds, it looks like. So it's always a good time. And also, the citywide yard sale from Friday, Saturday, Sunday, May 17, 18 to 19, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. There is the forms to fill out that you can access. And on May 20th, Monday, May 20th through Friday, May 24th, we have the citywide cleanup for all the stuff that probably doesn't get sold at the garage sales. So, Devin, these forms are available on the website.
They're on the website and they've already been posted on Facebook, too, to help get the information out. Dory's the one that takes care of all of that.
And weather's getting nice, guys, kids are out playing around, riding on bikes. Unfortunately, you've witnessed some people driving around city neighborhoods quite fast like it's, they got something to prove. So please, slow down, tell your children to slow down, tell your children to slow down after school. In the neighborhood, we gotta protect the little ones that can't protect themselves, so please take care of that and everyone have a safe, happy Easter for traveling. Show your family, show your loved ones, because everyone knows we're not gonna get this coming next one, right? So treat everybody well. Thank you very much. Any possible items for next meeting? We have mayor's appointments and possible adoption of zoning amendment number 344. Anything else, anyone needs to add? If not right now, contact myself or Devin. Now until the next meeting, we'll get that added to the agenda. All right, with that being said, the time is 8:12. I will call the, I will close the Perry City Council meeting, April 18 through 19 at 8:12.